The time is seven o'clock. I'd like to call the meeting order. Please join me in saying the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flying of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Misty, will you please call the roll?
Harleen Kane. Ray Eppete.
Here.
Bill Lukens.
Here.
Martin Meyer.
Here.
Bob Nelson.
Here.
Sam Powers.
Here.
Ron Richards.
Here.
Allison Witterbusch.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, we do have a quorum. The first item is to adopt the agenda. I would accept a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda. Second that.
You have a motion and a second to approve the agenda. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The agenda is approved. And again, I remind the council, if there are any conflict of interest with any of the items on the agenda, please notify the entire council prior to the voting. You have in your packages the minutes from the November 19th council meeting. I'd accept a motion to approve those minutes.
I think I motion to approve the minutes from the November 19th council meeting.
Seconded. Been moved and seconded to approve the minutes from November 19th. Are there any questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. You have in your packages a list of bills in between for $250,026.81. I would accept a motion to approve the bills in between.
I'll make a motion to approve the bills in between for $250,026.81.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the bills in between. Are there any questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The bills in between are approved. You have also in your packages current claims for $85,469.72. I would accept a motion to approve those current claims.
I'll make a motion to approve the current claims of $85,469.72.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the current claims. Are there any questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The current claims are approved. You also have the Wells Fargo credit card charges for $5,398.90. I'd accept a motion to approve those credit card charges.
I'll make a motion to approve the Wells Fargo credit card charges of $5,398.90. Second that.
Been moved and seconded to approve the credit card charges. Are there any questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We were scheduled to have a chamber quarterly update. However, the executive director, Olivia Mears, is not able to make it tonight. She's a little bit under the weather. We wish her well and hope that she gets well and joins us at our next meeting. Next on the agenda are communications from the public. Are there any communications from the public? Looks like I see some movement. If you'd come to the mic and introduce yourself, we'd appreciate it.
Hi, Jackie Garrity. And I just have a question. I don't know if this is the appropriate time to ask about the second reading of the water ordinance. I chatted with the gals in City Hall and respect the reason that you're doing that. I just wanted to know if there is a provision for landlords to get a reading like in between the month if I have a tenant move in. You know, I think there's some legality involving utilities, so I would have to give an exact number.
You can absolutely request what we call a read-only by calling into City Hall and we'll have one of our water, wastewater people go out and read the meter.
Okay, perfect. That's all?
Oh, okay. That was simple. Thanks, Misty, for having that answer because I didn't know it. Appreciate that. Are there any other communications from the public? Hearing none, we'll move on. In the agenda, we do have a public hearing at 7:10. I would move on to personnel actions if we could until that hearing time. We do have one of the actions listed, Zack Bell, the police officer that we had intended to hire, is not going to be coming. He received a substantial raise in the present job that he's in and has refused the offer of employment with our police department. So if we could remove Item C from the personnel actions, I would accept a motion to approve Items A, B, and D.
I'll make a motion to approve Personnel Actions A, B, and D.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded to approve Personnel Actions A, B, and D. Are there any questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We'll move on to committee reports involved administrative and finance, and we may interrupt you at 7:10 to call the hearing to order.
All right. Admin and Finance have a meeting today at City Hall at 1:00. Mayor Cotty, Bill, Misty, Kim, myself, and Brian Weidmeyer from Black Hills Technology were present. Meeting started at 1:00 and we got out at 4:30, so I didn't put together any formal minutes. I'm going to be working off two documents, one typewritten, my own notes, which I can hardly read anyway, but we'll see if we can get through this. In the old business, surplus property available lots, Kim has gotten the notice for requests for proposals out to the papers and out to interested parties, so that's moving forward. In new business, the mayor talked about a number of items to us, the Jennings Bridge, which the city council has been talking about for a while. That's the one leading to the fire station. The Corps of Engineers has not approved the design plan for that bridge. They have a problem with potential floods. They're using flood data from 1907, and Burroughs Engineering that the city hired is using flood data from 2007. So there's a difference of opinion about potential floods. Burroughs will be looking at possible redesign for that, which may cost the city additional money there. I believe the mayor is going to have some additional comments on that in his report. The Campbell-Leiver sidewalk, the mayor, Kim, had a meeting with ISG about possible marketing for the Campbell-Leiver sidewalk. Talked about Prairie Hills Transit. They've received notice that they've been approved for a grant to put a bus garage in Hot Springs, but there's a $75,000 local match for that that needs to be worked out. The city is looking at some potential properties that that might be located on, so we'll continue discussions on that. We also talked with Black Hills Technology about some recent computer issues that City Hall has been experiencing. They've got some, had some malware in computers in City Hall which were making their life miserable when it came to emails that they were getting. And I think you folks have probably got some of them also. Black Hills Technology is working out a solution for that right now. We also talked about implementing some additional measures going forward to make sure that that problem is taken care of. Will be, I believe it's in the next agenda, we'll be asking the council to approve a one-time installation, initial fee of $150, and $95 a month for some online, more robust spam monitoring so that the situation doesn't happen again. Unfortunately, it's a day age. Those are the kinds of things that we all have to deal with. It's been going on for about a week and a half. Black Hills Technology has been working with the city. Hopefully we'll get ahead of that, get that taken care of, so they can continue having a job.
Okay, Bob, hate to interrupt you, but the time is 7:10. I would like to call the hearing to order for a temporary alcoholic beverage license application. This one's from the Chamber of Commerce to use in conjunction with their Christmas mixer. And I know Olivia is not here tonight, but she did send an email to Misty with some comments, and so we'll open with that.
Olivia shared her apologies that she's unable to make the council meeting. She'll reschedule to give the chamber report, but also on the agenda is the temporary alcoholic beverage license application. She wanted to share. She's hoping you'll be kind enough to offer the chamber the ability to serve wine at their chamber Christmas soiree on December 20th from 4:00 to 8:00 p.m. It's a semi-private function where they'll offer some order of hours, order, orders, thank you, and light refreshments. And they will remain compliant with the rules and make sure that they don't serve to anyone underage.
Okay. There any comments from the audience why the chamber should or should not have this event, serve alcohol? Hearing none. Are there any comments, questions from the council? Okay, again, hearing none. Would ask a motion from the council to set that hearing for 7:10. The, I mean, to allow the license to be approved.
I'll make a motion to approve the temporary alcoholic beverage license from, to the Hot Springs Chamber of Commerce to be used at 801 South Sixth Street on 12, 2018 in conjunction with their Christmas mixer.
Second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we grant this temporary alcoholic beverage license. Are there any comments, questions, or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And Bob, we've got a couple more minutes, so we'll interrupt you again at 7:15.
All right. The mayor also talked with us about a gentleman by the name of Steve Beckley who is visiting Evans Plunge this Friday. Is that correct?
Thursday.
Thursday and Friday.
Yeah, Thursday and Friday.
Take a look at what we have in Evans Plunge and give us some advice about potential uses going forward. He has experience of natural spring and small development, so we're looking forward to having him take a look at the plunge and seeing if we might be able to expand that to some degree. Misty also briefed us on her report that you all have in your packages. I'd like to call attention to page two, or actually the third page. The last paragraph, she's talking with the council about ensuring that as we approve additional expenditures and we figure out a way to pay for them. And the part that I highlighted for my own reference is expenditure increases are being approved. I think we've been very friendly about trying to address the needs of the different departments and give them the resources that they need. But it is also time to talk about increasing revenue in equal amounts. So at Admin Finance, will we take a look at that and see if there's opportunities to increase funding to pay for those expenditures that we're operating on? I think it's important to keep that in the back of our minds as we increase expenditure and also make sure that we got a way to pay for those, not just in a year that they're approved, but in years down the road. We don't want to kick it down the road and have the council in the future try to deal with money pressures. Did I make it to 7:15?
You just are right on the money. It just turned 7:15, so.
I do have a couple of things after that.
We'll call the hearing to end. This is for a proposed resolution of necessity for the 26th Street Water Distribution System Improvement District. That district is up on 26th Street, near Doran Road area, up by the State Home. This will be financed by a special assessment. There's about 1,100 feet of water line. It will be installing six-inch water line. The estimated cost is around $79,000. Works out to about $71.81 per foot. The lots are intended to be assessed on a per-lot benefit basis, and the estimated cost per lot is $1,462.78. We were able to reduce the costs of this. As you know, that area is filled with gypsum base, gypsum rock, and one of the things that we'll be doing is using a rotary grinder to build those, dig those trenches, which we feel by renting that can cut the costs substantially as opposed to using a jackhammer on the end of a piece of city equipment. That is the kind of summary of what we'll be discussing. I would ask if there are any comments from the audience. This is a public hearing, and if you do have any comments for or against this, I would ask that you do come to the microphone, identify yourself, and address the council. Seeing no comments from the audience, from the council. Are there any questions, comments that any of the council members would like to make? Okay, hearing none. Again, I think this is an excellent opportunity for us to provide water service to another part of our town. As Bob just mentioned, it's a way of increasing revenues. The more people that we get into town, the more they're going to shop in our community, the more they're going to pay water bills and things like that, bring revenue into the, into the city. So we think this is a good thing for the community, and we've already gotten some new homes that are being built in that area. We will be voting on that resolution of necessity later in the agenda. So at this time, if there's no further comments, we will close the public hearing. Now that the hearing's been closed, we'll let Bob finish his report. Sorry about the interruption.
Misty also talked with us about the 2019 contracts, the year old contracts that will need to be renewed in the first of the year, and she's identified all those in her report too also. And we also talked about the Miser Award that was started last year for departments or employees that use innovative methods to try to reduce the costs for their department and save taxpayers' money. That award will be given out the next council meeting, if that's what we agree on. So we'll keep that in the air. Let the mayor announce who's going to get that at the next council meeting. We also talked about police department radios and funding for that. I believe we'll all talk a little bit more about that from a public safety standpoint, but the police department is having some reliability issues with their radios, which is a safety issue. So it's a matter of trying to find out the funding and how that will be taken care of. So we'll continue looking at that. The Mueller Center also approached us about some security cameras down here at the Mueller Center, and I'll expand on that a little bit during public work. The next public safety , Admin Finance meeting will be the first Monday in January, 1:00 at City Hall.
It's going to be the first Monday.
First Wednesday because of the holiday. Okay.
We're up on Tuesday, New Year's Day, and then we do have it.
All right. Thank you.
And thanks, Bob. And just one thing I did want to clarify on the Campbell-Leiver sidewalk, the engineering company that we, will be presenting a design proposal along with the marketing arm of that. I just want to make sure that that got noted in the record. Thanks for covering again the very busy Admin Finance meeting today. Airport Advisory Committee, Bill?
Okay. The Airport Advisory Committee met on Thursday, November 29th at 8:00 a.m. at the airport. I was not present, so thank you, Mayor Cotty, for taking notes. First item of discussion was regarding the capital improvement projects. There was consensus within the advisory committee that crack seal on the existing runways would be a high priority, and also the construction of T-hangers to increase airport usage. Regarding the update of recruiting an airport mechanic, we should hear sometime in January from the person that might be interested, and based on that, we'll take some, if it's an affirmative response, we will begin taking actions to accommodate that. Airport zoning was discussed regarding control of height of surrounding properties. So as we move forward, working with planning and zoning, the height issues around the airport is probably one of the key things in that zoning ordinance, and so that will be worked out so that the takeoff and landing planes are not impacted adversely by structures. The advisory board requested that the city look into purchasing the property adjacent to the northwest corner of the airport to ensure protection of the, of the RPC. Help me, Mayor.
Runway Protection Zone.
All right. You know, there's TLAs and FLAs, and this is TLA, which is a three-letter acronym I wasn't familiar with. So that will be, that's something they would like us to look at. They discussed any updates regarding the Pete Lean and Sons mining contract. The FAA is currently discussing the environmental concerns with four South Dakota Native American tribes. There was some concern from the FAA regarding language in the land transfer from USDA to the airport. Some of the language was a bit confusing concerning mineral rights, but we believe that that language does, is in there that would provide us with the mineral rights to that activity. The board also recommended the airport lease grazing rights with Mr. Gary Roney to continue at 50 cents ahead a day. And the board recommended that the hangar lease rates be raised from 10 cents per 12 cents per square foot. And the next meeting will be the last Thursday of December, which I think is the 27th, at 8:00 a.m. at the airport.
Okay. Thanks, Bill. Just one thing I just wanted to add to that, that runway protection zone was somewhat of a concern for the advisory board, and the reason being, we do have a situation within Fall River County where there is no zoning, and therefore people can build at will without having to get building permit. And that's something that would, if someone were to start building something within that runway protection zone, we would have to be proactive in ensuring that whatever structure was being built will not come into that runway protection zone. So what we've asked is that we will be notifying the property owners with a certified letter, asking them to notify us if they are going to be undertaking any construction within that runway protection zone. And that's outlined on a FAA map that we do have, and our city administrator, Kim, will be sending those letters out. I just want to clarify that a little bit more. Thanks, Bill.
Thank you, Mayor.
Next item is the Custer Fall River Waste Management District. Ron?
Next meeting will be the 10th of January, 2019, 7:00 a.m. at the Mueller Civic.
Okay, thank you. Downtown Historic Preservation Commission, Harleen, is out sick tonight. Evans Plunge Advisory Committee, Allison?
Next meeting is December 13th at noon at the plunge.
Okay, thank you. Parks Recreation, Beautification, and Cultural Development, Marty?
Next Parks meeting is tomorrow, December 4th at 3:00 p.m. here at the Mueller Civic.
Planning and zoning commission, Allison?
Next meeting will be December 19th at 7:00 at City Hall, and at that time I'll do a dual report on the November and December meeting.
Okay, thank you. Public Safety, Bill?
Okay, the committee met on November 20th at 2:00 p.m. at City Hall. In attendance were Mayor Cotty, Councilman Nelson, myself, Marty Myers, and Chief Close. Under Old Business, the committee discussed comments generated from the review of, our review of the Fall River County Multi-Jurisdictional Pre-Disaster Mitigation Plan and the Fall River County Local Emergency Operation Plan. Those combined comments will be forwarded to Frank Menard, Fall River County Emergency Operations Manager, and we're considering this item closed from Old Business, but we'll continue to track any internal items on our action log. Mayor Cotty and myself toured the library to determine if it could serve as a backup emergency coordination center for the city. It was determined that all necessary components are in place and the library could be used as such and would require only a minor expenditure to complete the preparations. Councilman Myers, Chair of the Parks Recreation, Beautification, and Cultural Development Committee, was in attendance at our meeting to discuss the request by the police department to revise the Parks Recreation Ordinance to prohibit all types of alcohol consumption at Brookside Park. After discussion, it was determined that no changes will be pursued at this time. The police department will continue enforcing the ordinance as written, especially as it regards to behavior and the presence of glass containers. Data on violations will be gathered through the higher use times of the year, and we'll review that data and act accordingly next fall. Regarding our follow-up log, we're continuing, the members are continuing to work on any outstanding items. Under New Business, the committee discussed the sale of the eight animal cages and agreed the city should go ahead with that sale since we have no suitable location to keep animals acquired by the animal control officer. So that would be our recommendation to this council, go ahead with that sale. Chief Close provided a summary of departmental issues and events since the last meeting, some of the items of interest. The condition of the portable radios used by the department continues to deteriorate and is becoming an offensive safety issue. The committee recommends to the council that funds be provided to replace the existing equipment now with enough radios to equip all officers and reserve officers and have an appropriate spare with portable radios that will be appropriate for the technology change coming in 2020. On a happier note, the Dollar General Toys Drive has provided over 500 or 400 items, and families are being selected to participate in the Shop With A Cop event to distribute those toys. And we'd like to thank Dollar General as well as the citizens that have contributed, and we just appreciate their care and generosity for our community. The police department, along with the middle school student council, delivered Thanksgiving meals and meal fixings to six families. And again, we want to thank those that were involved and those that contributed. And the Reserve Officer Academy will be starting in January, and I believe we'll have three reserve officer Reserve Officer candidates in that class. Committee did continue to discuss some of the various mitigations listed in the Pre-Disaster Mitigation Plan, and those that require action or expenditures from the city are being compiled on a risk register for further assessment and tracking. The meeting ended at 4:45 p.m., and the next Public Safety meeting will be Wednesday, December 19th, at 2:00 p.m. at City Hall.
Okay. Thank you, Bill. Public Works, Bob and Ray?
Public Works met on November 27th at City Hall. Mayor Cotty, Ray, Kim, Tracy, Scott, Billy Morrow, and Chris Katkey were present. Three old business items I'll update you on. Request for proposal for the workforce housing, talked a little bit about that at Advent Finance. Again, the notice has been sent out to papers. The papers had interested parties, and Kim, I believe, you said there were 16 interested parties that we had sent notice out to. Last time we put it out, we didn't get any responses. This time we have 16 folks that basically want to look at it, so hopefully we'll be moving forward with a request for proposal at the Old Water Field Station. We still have a couple Boulder Falls warranty items that we're following. There's some yucca plants, they're hardy little critters that grow through the road surface out there, and that work will be completed in the spring of 2019. The city will also be invoicing a contractor for work completed by city crews to repair sewer damage during the construction of the project. So the city did the repair work, and the contractor will reimburse us for the damage that was done. The roof repairs that have been ongoing, the Evans Pumping Station wastewater treatment facility and the Mueller Center are done, and work has begun on the replacement of the City Hall roof. We have three new -- two new business items that we talked about, Prairie Hills Transit. Yeah, I mentioned a little bit of that during Advent Finance. Our client, Executive Director of Prairie Hills Transit, sent a letter to Mayor Cotty telling him that they have received official notification, they have been awarded a federal grant to proceed with the bus facility in Hot Springs. Discussions will continue at Prairie Hills Transit about the possibility of parking with that located bus facility in Hot Springs. Also mentioned the security cameras at the Mueller Center. The Mueller Center was broken into recently, and the bomb machine was damaged. This isn't the first time the Mueller Center's been broken into. Chris, manager of the Mueller Center, asked if he could use remaining funds in his 2018 budget to install four security cameras and associated equipment to provide better security for the Mueller Center system. Chris is recommending we allow 24-hour recording of the Mueller Center and would also tie in at the police station. When Chris approached Public Works, he felt like he still had money left in his budget to cover that cost. Installation cost would be $1,912. At Advent Finance today, we talked with Misty, and there isn't any budget left in Chris's account to pay for the installation of cameras. While it's important, there's other things that money needs to be spent on at this point, so we'll keep working with Chris to see if we can somehow find out in the future. Public Works Committee is recommending installation of the security camera. We'll try to work it out and see how we can get that taken care of, but right now, this doesn't look like there's money there to get that done as soon as Chris would like to have it. Ray, did I miss anything? Do you have your comments?
The last item we discussed, we talked about additional security cameras for surveillance of the outsides of the building. I think it's something that's necessary, has to happen.
Yeah. The system is expandable. What he feels would be his needs currently are four cameras with the siren and tied into the police station, and it would be expandable up to eight cameras. Anything else?
No.
All right. Next Public Works meeting will be December 11th, 3:00 p.m. at City Hall.
Okay. Thanks, Bob, and thanks, Ray. Southern Hills Economic Development, Marty?
Next Shedco Ward meeting will be Friday, December 21st at noon. The location is to be determined.
Okay. Southern Hills Golf Course Advisory Committee, the course is closed for the winter, and Jason has the holes all plugged up, and there's plenty of snow, and a lot of deer digging on the golf course.
Road shop is open for parties, so contact Kat if you want to.
Good point. Thank you, Misty. We do have opportunities for people to have a Christmas party at our clubhouse, very nice location. Volunteer Fire Department, Ron?
Next meeting will be the 11th of December, 2018, at the House Creek Volunteer Fire Department, 7:00 p.m.
And comprehensive plan?
Nothing to report.
Okay. Thank you. Moving on in our agenda, we have three ordinances to consider. The first is our second reading of the Ordinance 1194, which is a supplemental appropriation ordinance. I believe there are no changes as to what was voted on and approved the first reading last meeting. I would accept a motion to approve the second reading of Ordinance 1194.
I'd like to approve the second reading of Ordinance 1194, supplemental appropriation ordinance. Second down.
It has been moved and seconded to approve the second reading of our supplemental appropriation ordinance. Are there any questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing none, I'd ask Misty if he would call the roll, please.
Ray Ekafi?
Yes.
Bill Lukens?
Yes.
Martin Meyer?
Yes.
Bob Nelson?
Yes.
Sam Powers?
Yes.
Ron Richards?
Yes.
Allison Ritterbusch?
Yes.
Thank you.
We also have on the agenda the second reading of Ordinance 1195, which is Chapter 21A of the wastewater and storm sewer revision. That includes -- again, that was presented at the last meeting. I believe there were no changes to that ordinance. I would accept a motion to approve the second reading of Ordinance 1195.
Make a motion to approve the second reading of Ordinance 1195, Chapter 21-A, wastewater and storm sewer revision.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded and approved, the second reading of Ordinance 1195. Are there any questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing none, I'd ask Misty to call the roll, please.
Ray Ekafi?
Yes.
Bill Lukens?
Yes.
Martin Meyer?
Yes.
Bob Nelson?
Yes.
Sam Powers?
Yes.
Ron Richards?
Yes.
Allison Ritterbusch?
Yes.
Thank you.
We also have a second reading of Ordinance 1196, the water code revision. Again, after the first reading that was approved last meeting, there had been no changes to that ordinance. I would accept a motion to approve Ordinance 1196.
Make a motion to approve Ordinance 1196, Chapter 26A, water code revision.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the second reading of Ordinance 1196. Are there any discussion, questions, or comments? Hearing none, Misty, would you please call the roll?
Ray Ekafi?
Yes.
Bill Lukens?
Yes.
Martin Meyer?
Yes.
Bob Nelson?
Yes.
Sam Powers?
Yes.
Ron Richards?
Yes.
Allison Ritterbusch?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Again, thank you very much, Council, and for those out in the audience, there's been a lot of discussion that went into making these changes to the water and wastewater ordinances. I'd want to thank our city staff, particularly the wastewater and water departments, for sitting down and working with the City Administrator, the front office, along with the Finance Office to come up with that. Again, I remind the community that these do include a rate adjustment, and that is so that we will qualify for financing and the possible grants as we have some significant improvements that we have to make, particularly during the highway reconstruction project. So thank you very much, Council, for all your input on these. Moving on in the agenda, we have two resolutions to consider. The first is Resolution 2018-24. This is the resolution of necessity for the 26th Street Water Distribution System. We did have the hearing earlier. I would ask for a motion to approve Resolution of Necessity, 2018-24.
I'd make a motion to approve Resolution 2018-24, Resolution of Necessity, 26th Street Water Distribution System Improvement District. Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the resolution of necessity. Are there any questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing none, I'd ask all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We also have before you Resolution 2018-25, and that's a resolution to increase police chief and police captain to top of scale effective January 1st, 2019. If you remember during our budget hearing and discussion, we discussed the -- Chief Close came to the council and asked to increase the starting wage for our police officers to better bring qualified candidates to apply. He did not ask for a raise for the police chief or police captain, but it was agreed to consider that during the new budget year, and so that's what we're doing with Resolution 2018-25. I would accept a motion to increase those salaries.
Make a motion to approve Resolution 2018-25, a resolution to increase police chief and police captain to top of scale effective 1/1, 2019.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded that we adopt Resolution 2018-25. Are there any questions, comments, or discussion?
Was this anticipated in the 2019 budget then? I know you said we did the officers, and I recall doing that, but this changed, and we also had that anticipated, correct? Okay.
Any other questions or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We move on to New Business. The first item is Item A, a possible motion and discussion to approve the 2019 Evans Plunge Mineral Springs Assignment Lease Billboard. This is the billboard located south of Maverick Junction on property belonging to Gary and Sharon Romi. I'd accept a motion to approve that lease.
I'd make a motion to approve the 2019 Evans Plunge Mineral Springs Assignment Lease Site for billboard located south of Maverick Junction on US Highway 18-385 with Gary and Sharon Romi.
I'll second that motion.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve that billboard lease. Again, a strategic location, not only to get people into Evans Plunge, but also into Hot Springs, so I would ask if there's any questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We also have a motion and discussion to approve a 2019 Assignment Lease Site for a billboard, and this is located south of Minnacotta Junction on Highway 18 on property owned by Scott and Christie Phillips. I'd accept a motion to approve that billboard lease.
I make a motion to approve the 2019 Evans Plunge Mineral Springs Assignment Lease Site for the billboard located south of Minnacotta Junction on US Highway 18 with Scott and Christie Phillips.
I'll second that.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded that we approve that lease. Are there any discussion, questions, or comments?
I just have a comment regarding on our -- on these billboards, we are starting to get very faded in our signage, so this is something that we'll want to think about. This is kind of separate than the lease, but we have these big billboards, and our signs are getting very faded.
We have a brand-new skin on the first one.
Oh, good.
It looks very nice. I don't dread that circle on the coffee, but it's actually in pretty good condition. We're keeping it up.
And good point, Allison. And again, the location here is very critical because this is prior to the junction to go up Highway 89 to Pringle and Custer and Hill City and places north, and we want to direct people to come to Hot Springs, so it's important that we have strategic advertising in these locations. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item is Item C, a possible motion and discussion to approve the signing and filing of a corrective quitclaim deed related to some property that is owned by Mildred Froman, and there was a mistake made on a document when the city quitclaimed that property back in November of 2006. I would accept a motion to approve that signing and filing, the corrective quitclaim deed.
I'll make a motion to approve the signing and filing of a corrective quitclaim deed related to lot H of Block 2 of Cold Springs addition of the city of Hot Springs, Fall River County, South Dakota, as shown on the plat files of Book 22 of Platts, page 103, Office of the Register of Deeds, Fall River County, South Dakota, to correct the mistake in the document when the city quitclaimed the robbery to Mildred Froman on November 15th, 2006.
I'll second.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded that we make that correction. Is there any questions? Are there any questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. As you know, last meeting, we opened the bid for eight animal cages. We have before you a motion and possible discussion to approve the sale of those.
Misty.
Pardon?
We've got to go back to D.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you for -- I was just checking to see if anybody was -- not really. I'm just trying to get through Monday Night Football. We also have a motion and discussion to approve. You do have in your packages an Exhibit A. This is a 30-foot-wide private access easement located up by our 2 million gallon water tank, and it gives us access to that city property through property owned by the Cavals, and it gives them access to using Doran Road. So you do have that easement in your package, and I'd ask for a motion to approve that.
I'd like to make a motion to approve Exhibit A, a survey showing a 30-foot-wide private access easement located in the south one-half northeast one-quarter of Section 15, TNS, R5E, BHM, Black Group, Fall River County, South Dakota, for city access across private land currently owned by the Cavals to access the Doran Road Water Tower. And Exhibit B, a survey showing a 30-foot-wide private access easement located in Track A of the south one-half northeast quarter of Section 15, T7S, R5E, BHM, Fall River County, South Dakota, to allow mutual access to the Cavals' property across city land.
I'll second.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded that we approve this easement. Are there any questions, comments, or discussion?
I have a question. When we first started talking about this access, about the access to the Doran Road Water Tower, it was initially going to be the city will scratch out a little path, it'll be a straight path from Doran Road up to the Water Tower, and everything would be okay. It's taken on a life of its own. This is This is going to wrap it all up, and the city will have their access to the Water Tower, and we're not going to visit this anymore.
This was always part of the process because the property that the Water Tower sits on is an island within the Cavell's property. So, whenever we put a new access road to that system, we're going to need to make sure that it's a mutual agreement. Now, the way it was before, it went across other private property that we both used without easements and everything. And actually, whenever that was removed, the Cavell's actually had their access to their own property removed as well. So, everything that we've done to access the Water Tower has also been mutually beneficial to them to also access their property that have been, their access have been removed. So, this was always part of it because we knew that we had to cross at least 50 feet of their property just to even get to our property. So, this should do it. We do have one last easement that was an infringement from an adjacent property owner. That should be coming at the next meeting, we're hoping. Looks like it's getting right there and ready. So, that should be the one that ties everything up.
I have a different recollection of what the project was going to involve, but at this point, all that's important to me is that this is, this is going to fix it. We're not going to have anything going forward. Thank you.
And there are no plans to pave that road?
I'm sorry, it's not a road, it's an access road.
Access trail, all right. Again, a long saga of getting that, that access completed, and again, thanks to the city maintenance crews for doing that, which would have been a very costly undertaking had we contracted that out. Are there any other questions or comments? Okay, we'll go ahead. All those in favor of granting those easements signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And now, we move on to the eight animal cages. We did have one bid, Michelle Brock, and those were for a total of $80. I'd ask for a motion to approve the sale of those animal cages.
I make a motion to approve the sale of the eight animal cages to sole bidder Michelle Brock with Stars No Rescue, No Kill Rescue for a total of $80.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the sale of those animal cages. Are there any questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We also have before you Item F, a motion and discussion to set a public hearing on December 17, that 7/10. Again, a application for retail on-off sale wine and cider license from Earth Goods. And I would accept a motion to approve that, setting that public hearing.
I'll make a motion to set a public hearing on December 17, 2018, 7/10 PM to act on the application for retail on-off sale wine and cider license from Earth Goods LLC to be used at 7:38 Jennings Avenue.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded to set this public hearing. Are there any questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on in the agenda, Finance Officer Port Misty.
Thank you. I want to start by thanking the Ochsman team and our street city maintenance departments for replacing the rippling carpet in City Hall. So, in the last couple of weeks, not only do we have computer issues, we were moved out of our location, but within two and a half days, they had the new flooring down, the carpet down, and everything put back in place. You just heard Mayor Cotty mentioning how much money they saved the city by doing that road, and they saved us a chunk of change by installing that carpet. We appreciate their quick and efficient work to do that, and we no longer have a trip hazard back there, so very thankful.
And Misty, also want to thank you, Karen, and the people up front for the way you had to stand up and relocate several different times and still were able to get all the financial reports and so forth done. So, thank you very much for the extra effort you all put in.
Yeah, thanks for mentioning that. Barb Benson, Mary Hardy up front, Karen Bingley, and myself, we were really concerned we were going to get all this done in time for the meeting, and everyone just kept working like there was nothing else going on. We have an excellent staff, so thanks for mentioning that. In my finance office report, I won't read it all to you, but there are many things happening to finalize 2018. There's definitely been a lot accomplished this year, and we most definitely see a push to get things finished up before the end of the year. Much work is done in the finance office to accurately account for our many payments and receipts. This work to finalize and compile these figures happens well into the first quarter of 2019, and I believe all of our department heads and staff are prepared for the slowdown in purchases and the collection of any receivables so that we can account for that correctly. I have closed out the two savings accounts and moved the funds from one account to another and established the five new CDs as approved at the last council meeting. You may notice in your investment reports that a couple of our accounts have very large balances right now. I did get those CDs opened, I just haven't got them established in our accounting software yet, so by the next reports, you'll see the movement of that money into those new CDs according to our accounting software. We already talked a little bit about the purchase of the radios that Public Safety and our Police Department are recommending. That will be added to, the amount needed will be added to the contingency resolution you'll see in the next council agenda. We're working out how much of the $18,500 will need to be covered by contingency and how much will be covered in their 2018 budget. During the next council meeting, you'll also be asked to authorize the transfer of funds from our 212 Additional Sales Tax Fund to cover the subsidies we already approved in both Evans Plunge and our golf course. We do review both revenue collected for the year, expenses totals for the year, and cash balances, and only what is needed to cover the actual expenditures will be transferred. I've been working on the 2019 Wage Scale Resolution for our full-time and current part-time employees to reflect both the cost of living adjustment approved by council during budget, as well as the state raise in the minimum wage. Kim and I have been working on the 2019 contracts for renewal, be prepared to approve the barnyard contract, the meter reader contract, fitness instructor at the plunge, police department cleaning contract, some billboard lease agreements, and airport grazing agreements. We're still awaiting the deed to transfer the ownership of Building 1 from the city to the state. As soon as we receive that, we'll also be doing the subsequent transfer you approved from the city to ship. I recently completed the 2018 Annual Survey of Local Governments for the US Department of Commerce. This is the only source of nationwide and comprehensive information on state and local government finances. I'm also working on our South Dakota Public Assurance Alliance 2019 Coverage Renewal Review and Submission. Work with all the department heads and the city administrator before submitting that, and our 2019 bill will be, our rates will be based off the renewal submission. I've mentioned a little bit about the last paragraph where I talk about spending growth and revenue growth. I do think we owe our taxpayers a fiscally responsible approach from the top to bottom. Do a great job with that, but in order to have long-term financial sustainability, it's up to us to ensure future generations of taxpayers don't face an unmanageable bill for services, provided the current generations. I'm happy to hear that we will continue to talk about how we're going to continue to pay for any expenditure increases that are approved. Municipal Day of the Legislatures coming up, February 6th, I'll be sending out the reminder to council members, if you're interested in going, it's definitely worth your time. The city will pay for your travel. It's nice to get a few people together and go as a group. You do get to see the legislature in action, and S D M L puts on a nice rib dinner the night before and talks about things that affect each and all of our cities that'll be discussed during the legislative session. And then, last, I just wanted to mention, I'll be out of the office this Thursday at 6 for our Black Hills Area Finance Officers Association meeting. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Misty. City Administrator, report. Kim?
Well, between the mayor's upcoming report, and I've gotten highlights from that, and our committee reports, I think most people have touched on a lot of what I've been busy with. Everything from RFP workforce housing, Pete Lean and Sons, Canley Ridge sidewalks, bridges. We've been kind of busy on all sorts of fronts, but we've been also having fun, so, it's December, so I'm going to do a lot of fun things. We had a ribbon cutting on Thursday for the Freedom Trail expansion. It was well attended despite it being cold and dark, and we had, actually had some folks come in from Iowa, from Walmart. They had given us a grant for $10,000, and they were in attendance, and it was, it was just a really great time to appreciate the street department, although we say thanks to them there. It was actually nice to see them in person, seeing people really appreciate what they've been able to do. And a big kudos to Kathy Derska. She can, she can do amazing things when, without a budget, and she put on our reception afterwards that was excellent, and Evans Plunge was a great host. The following night was the Parade of Lights, and we actually had city involvement in the Parade of Lights this year. It's the first time since the inaugural parade. We haven't been involved with it since, but we had a street sweeper that was decorated out as a gingerbread house covered with a gingerbread family, and they won the best theme, Southern Hills Golf Course. There was a trio, a group of five of us that had golf courts, golf carts all lit up, and we were putting the Shriners to shame, and Evans Plunge had made their own float. Tracy Bastian played the music, and we had Josh decorated in a gingerbread outfit and rocking out on his ring. So, if you got to see the parade, we were there in full account, and you can also see it on our Facebook page if you wanted to see the parade itself. We've also been working on a lighter note, or actually more serious note, to Evans Plunge to restructure the way that the director and the people underneath her actually work. We've had a really difficult time filling the applications for a full-time wellness and health director for aquatics, and so we're kind of restructuring that. That's going to be coming before you. You'll see things kind of laid out in a different manner. We're trying to think outside of the box to really make sure that work is spread out, and we have good coverage where we actually have management available on all shifts so that we don't have part-time seasonal workers doing the work of closing and being responsible in time of emergency. We also have a great need for lifeguards. If you know of anybody that's interested in a part-time job that gets you full use of our pool, please contact Chris Hanson at Evans Plunge. We also having a big holiday party. We're trying something a little bit different this year. We're still doing our food drive. It's a free admission with a non-perishable food item for the pantry on December 8th. It's all day at Evans Plunge. At 1 o'clock, we're going to have a special treat. It's 1 o'clock to 2:30, I believe, the Fall River flutes are going to be playing and serenading around the Christmas tree, so it should be a good time, or we're going to have some refreshments and other activities going on then as well. And the big, big thing is that Santa and Mrs. Claus are going to be visiting the library this Tuesday, December 11th, at 6 o'clock PM. So, we got them to come, and now's your time to meet them.
So, everybody be, be good, all right? Okay, thanks. Very busy time. As far as my report, a couple of things that I want to bring forward. I've been contacted by a couple of different people to address an affordable housing editorial that was published in the Fall River Herald, and I just want to address it briefly. The editorial, I believe, was maliciously false by the items that were addressed previously with the author of the article. That individual had made an appeal to council concerning a house that was being built next door and pointed out to several code violations. The codes that were quoted were the International Commercial Building Codes as opposed to the residential building codes that are used for residential construction. Those articles, that was pointed out to the individual, and those international building codes were used in the article. I do have an update. I've asked both the Star and the Fall River County Herald to include a city scoop that gives an update on our need for workforce affordable housing. As we've mentioned here tonight, that RFP out is out, there is interest. We do have even a meeting this Thursday with another developer that has expressed interest in that workforce affordable housing. We know that it's a need that has been documented by a housing study, and we are using our city-owned property as a stimulus to get something started, and it creates an opportunity for a number of workforce homes to be built, plus gets our excess property on the tax rolls and gives us the city some income to pay for putting water and sewer to those properties. Those buildings will be met and will be built and meet code, and we know from communications that I've had both with the State Petron's Home and the VA that there is a dire need for getting housing for people coming to work here in Hot Springs. Second thing that's been mentioned a couple of times here is we're having Mr. Steve Beckley come. He's a natural spring water and spa developer and consultant. He's coming to Hot Springs at no charge. He wants, we would like to pick his brain and get an update on what we can do to enhance our plunge operation. He's very familiar with industry trends and looking at ways that we can increase income at our plunge. So, our intent to have him here is to plan and develop and best utilize the healing waters that we've been blessed with here in, in Hot Springs. Advisory Board, quite frankly, has been struggling coming up with a long-range master plan, and that's something that is difficult because we've got a lot of different interests, and so it's, it's, I think, an encouragement to have someone that is a neutral party, that is the mayor with what's going on in the industry, come and give us some advice. One of the things that we may be faced with is there could be a potential for a private-public partnership if we want to make significant advances to portions of the plunge. So, those things we will be looking at, and we look forward to Mr. Beckley's visit, and we want to thank Kara Higgin for providing the opportunity for him to stay here in Hot Next item that I'd like to talk a little bit about, has been mentioned before, is also the design of the Jennings Avenue Bridge. I was very disappointed in the call that we had, conference call that we had with the Corps of Engineers Omaha Office, and I'll just be upfront and blunt about it. They refused to sign off on Brose Engineer's design of the bridge. They said the design did not provide adequate space to keep the river from overflowing the bridge and surrounding area during a 500-year flood. Now, Brose Engineer is using a 2007 FEMA flood design or water event to design that bridge. The Corps of Engineers is using a 1907 data from Spearfish Canyon. The Corps of Engineers is using a 1907 data from Spearfish Canyon flood. I asked the question, how in the world does a flood that happened 150 miles or so from Hot Springs have anything to do with our Fall River basin? And I did not get a significant or accurate answer. Bros' engineers' design is a single span. That means the current bridge has a pier right in the middle of it. And what Bros is doing, a single-span bridge. And that creates some advantages for us because removing the pier from the center of the channel helps during a flood event. Debris has a tendency to collect on those piers in the middle of, of a channel. Along with the fact that the way the current runs now, it runs to the right, or to the left of the pier and it's toward the flood wall side of the pier, and it's undermining the flood wall. And so we mitigate both of those issues by doing a single span. What that does for us, obviously, there's a potential for increased costs to redesign that. And there's also going to cause a heartache and a headache potentially with the Department of Transportation because they're going to have to redesign that portion of the road where Jennings Bridge interfaces with Highway 385. We've asked Bros to look at the impact, first of all, to look at possibly a redesign with a center pier. And secondly, to do a single span with perhaps looking at composite decking. Composite material weighs considerably less than concrete decking. It's equally as strong. And that may require less of a beam structure underneath the bridge to hold that composite decking. It may give us some additional, additional room. It was very apparent that the Corps of Engineers were not willing to budge on their design criteria. And we may have to rely on some congressional assistance to perhaps get them to see or explain the design flood data that they are using and ensure that it's accurate. One of the questions we asked, there was supposed to be a study of the Fall River flood basin this past summer to document and redetermine whether, what that flood design would be. The Corps of Engineers elected not to fund that study. And that study is obviously very definitely needed. So we would also encourage our congressional delegation to put pressure on them to get us some accurate data as to what they're using for design criteria. And I just wanted to make sure that you, as a council, were aware of that because you may be seeing coming before you an additional bill for designing of Jennings Avenue Bridge. And again, I want to thank everyone. The malware issues that we've had, it's been kind of some rough times around City Hall with malware construction and so forth. Everyone has pitched together. And again, I want to thank the council. I appreciate the detailed reports. It seems like we all vote together to agree on everything. But there's a lot of homework, a lot of questions and discussion that has gone in at the committee meetings. I took great recommendation to this council. And I appreciate everyone's efforts in that area. With that said, I would ask for a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn?
I'll second that.
It moved and seconded. We adjourned. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.